Good evening, welcome to the December 18th meeting of the Norton Planning Board. We have some bills and warrants to be paid. Folks have seen this, I believe. There are two sets of bills, one from our operating budget, one from the review account. First from our budget is $596.52. Actually, they're both review.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I hadn't noticed that. Both of these are review. Out of the review account, one for $596.52 to Emery Engineering. The project being Condyne. And the other for slightly more, $18,444.68, also out of the review account for Condyne Engineering. Folks have seen it. Are there questions on either bill? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Who's second?
Frank.
Frank. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous? Minutes for leaves November 13th. Is that the date?
Yes.
And December 4th. Folks had a chance to review the two sets of minutes?
I have a couple of edits to the minutes for the 13th.
Okay.
On the bottom of the first page, the last bullet point. The trip generator distribution analysis was conservative. I don't think that was something that was going to be to revise. That was just a point stating that Condyne's analysis was a conservative end of things. And on page two, it's just a couple of homonyms. The line that says Condyne at the top of the page should be except with an EX instead of accept.
Where are you, Tim? Oh, I see.
And then, in the motion, it should be the other wave.
I'm sorry, I'm...
In the motion directly below, it should be the other spelling of wave.
Oh, add the I.
Yeah.
Generally, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. That was my counterpart got me this time, so that's all good.
Any other items on...
Really, you're just testing us, is what's happening.
Any other items for correction on the minutes of November 13th? Hearing none, is there a motion for acceptance of minutes as corrected on November, for November 13th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And I will abstain because I wasn't here. December 4th. Any items for correction on the minutes of December 4th?
I think I'm missing a page. Is it just one page? Do we have two?
Just one.
It doesn't have a closing of the meeting.
Yep.
Mine, double sided mine.
Oh, yours has double side, yeah, mine does not either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're missing page two.
Yeah.
You want to table these till either later tonight or at our next meeting?
There's nothing that catches my eye. We would have two members abstaining anyway, I believe.
I'll move to approve the minutes of December 4th as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Frank and Steve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, there's a... We'll use before I get to him back. Next item on the agenda is an A and R endorsement for 142 Oak Street. Christopher Coate, is that how it's pronounced? If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and letting us know what it is you hope us to not approve.
Chris, do you need a, do you need a map?
No, no, I have it.
Okay.
I have it.
Well, do you copy this plan?
I'm passing them. I'll hold the M I R.
So one for each of us?
It looks like there's...
Yeah.
They come in twos?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Coate with Aspen Properties, have an office at 60 Court Street, Taunton, Mass. Pretty simple what I'm doing here. I'm going to be, it's currently two parcels. I'm going to be splitting off a 32,000 square foot parcel and selling it to the neighbor, Albert Polk. So it'll be increasing his property size and frontage. And then I'll be combining the remaining of that parcel and the other parcel, so I have the required area and frontage. It meets all the minimum lot requirements and frontage. It's an A and R plan, approval not required.
So just to confirm, you're combining parcels A and C with the existing home and garage?
Yep.
And parcel B will be...
Combined with Mr. Polk's parcel, yes.
Okay.
Is C the resulting parcel, or is C this other parcel?
Uh, C is the resulting parcel of...
Sorry.
So, okay, so...
The new...
So we're taking out this...
Yeah.
This line.
Yep, that dotted line there is removed.
And is, is B a separate parcel now?
It is not, and that's where the, a little bit of the challenge. We all thought it was three separate parcels, and I made an agreement to sell it to Mr. Polk, thinking that they were three separate parcels. And then when I did the research, I found out that B was not separate, so I had, now I'm separating it, combining the two. So basically giving up my ability to build on that last lot, to sell that piece to Mr. Polk.
Are you asking us to approve C or B or both?
Both. Splitting off 32,000 square feet to Mr. Polk, and then combining the other two parcels.
Now, is the assumption Mr. Polk is buying parcel B, so no one can build there?
Correct, that's exactly what he's doing.
Okay, are you, you're combining B with something else?
With Mr. Polk's parcel.
But that's not shown on this plan.
It's in the notes.
Yeah, to be combined with the budding lands of Polk.
But we don't see that land.
It's the parcel, map 15 parcel 4304.
Yeah, but we don't have the plan for it?
That's, that's, this is, this is the plan.
How big is the parcel? Where's, where's its boundary?
For, for Mr. Polk's parcel?
Yeah.
This is being added to his parcel.
I understand that. I mean, but are we approv, help me out here. Are we approving parcels, it says we're creating...
We're not approving B as a buildable lot or anything like that. It's an A and R.
I understand, but we're creating parcel A and B. Parcel A is being combined with C. B is not a buildable lot. So we're just, this is, we're not, we're creating this B, we're not combining it now.
We're, we're...
We're selling it to Mr. Polk, yes. We're not combining it.
We're, we're taking 32,000 square feet, which is parcel B, in combining, in selling that piece to Mr. Polk to increase his lot size. And then we're combining the remaining of parcel A and the other lot into one lot. So we, we start with two lots, we end up with two lots.
Yeah, okay. We're not combining B with anything right now.
We're combining Mr. Polk's land.
I, I think the point that he's making, we're creating parcel B, although the notation says, where'd it go?
It's right here. Yeah, I see it now, yeah.
It's to be combined with another parcel, but it's, creating parcel B is a, is a lot, non-buildable lot.
Right.
Right.
Is this affecting any abuddists in Mr. Polk?
No. So this, this will be recorded at the registry, and when this is recorded, it combines it to Mr. Polk's land.
Well, I think the question that's being raised, and I, I don't know what the answer is, it, approval of this would appear to clearly combine parcel A with parcel 4301 to create a new parcel C. I think everyone's on board with that. It creates a new parcel, or it subdivides what was here before into a new parcel B. And if you want to convey that to Mr. Polk, that's, that's, you know, between you and Mr. Polk. But I'm not sure that actually combines the two.
Correct.
Which may or may not be problematic. If Mr. Polk, I assume, wants to, you know, later combine them, if they're not already combined, he can come back and, for an A and R to combine the two and wipe out that line. I don't know if that's necessary or not. I can't answer that question, I don't know.
Okay, no, I just, that's...
I see your point.
Okay.
Which would be up to Mr. Mr. Polk to...
Either leave it as a...
To, yeah, to make that request, to combine those two parcels in the one. Because you couldn't, you couldn't submit a request to combine his properties. I would have to do that, correct?
If two parcels that are undersized, owned by the same, same owner automatically combine?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the answer to that question.
Okay.
We don't know if that, is that another parcel undersized?
I don't know. Because we, we don't have information.
He's not the owner of that parcel.
I'm sorry?
They're not the, they're going to convey it. Right now, it's not conveyed. What they do later on is something else. Right now, we can approve, this is a standalone parcel.
Right.
That's all we can do.
But it's been my understanding that two, you know, two undersized lots owned by the same owner automatically combine. I don't know if the existing...
I don't think Mr. Polk's lot is, is undersized.
Is it?
I don't believe it is. He's got a pretty good sized lot there. But we're going to be completing the transaction on December 28th, selling that parcel to Mr. Polk.
I think for our purposes, we're, we are okay at this juncture to act on what we see. And if there's further action that's required, Mr. Polk, if that's not, if it's not something that's automatically done, it's something that could certainly be easily done in a future A and R. What's the, do you want up top, you have the zoning lot size?
It's 48, it's like six or seven. It's two lots held in continuous, adjacent lots?
Yeah.
Held in by the same owners, I've considered one.
Right, I just didn't know if, what's the zoning in that area?
The minimum lot is 40,000.
Okay.
150 on frontage.
So assuming Mr. Polk's current lot's over 8,000 feet, then he's got a buildable lot.
So you're requesting two motions, or just the one motion to change?
I'm sorry?
Is there a two motion?
No, we're just approving or endorsing the one singular A and R.
Unless there are any questions, like to move to endorse the change?
A second.
Then a motion and second is there further discussion? What question?
Other than the misspelling of Taunton on them, line number five. Make a difference or not?
You haven't lost your touch, huh?
Don't you turn one up, Jim, huh?
Just a little internal loss. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Sign three or four copies plus the M I R.
How about we sign everything down at that end, and these just go away?
A second.
Frank, one.
Yeah. We just had a holiday. Okay, go ahead. We'll have to...
This was Chris, I know.
That's for you as well, Joe?
You have signed this, or?
They're coming down this way.
Okay. I don't know how many we've got. Two of them?
One, two...
I have two.
It could be the hard one. He's got this.
Yeah.
At least it's the easiest one. Yeah. You're out of order. Tickets. Yeah. There we go. So now we can get all four to the rest. This was from, well, I took that with me, that one night, but that should have remained with you.
Okay. Thank you.
We only have five lines here, is that...
He told me he'd be back, so I'll, I'll take them.
Play horses.
Do you want to hold on to them? Okay.
These are the, these are blanks.
There's a blank screen.
Okay, I need the sign. Okay, you're still looking at the sign, once.
Our next item on the agenda is a continuance of the hearing from December 4th for Blue Star Business Park, Condyne Engineering Group for site plan. Oh, just, yeah, just on top or alongside, I'm sorry, for continuance of the public hearing for site plan and special permit on lots one through five. Again, this is a continuance, so where the motion, the, the public hearing reopen. Mark, do you want to catch us up as to where we are?
Good evening, again, Mark Deib with Condyne Engineering Group. So on the 7th of December, we resubmitted the full package of site plans for this project. We resubmitted a response letter that responded to the peer review for stormwater, the peer review for wetlands, the wetland review by the conservation agent, and comments from your, from Paul, Director for Planning and Economic Development. We also resubmitted, or we submitted a project narrative that focuses on some of the work in the wetland, in and around the wetland resource areas. We also resubmitted the drainage calculations that were revised as responding to the comments. If you'd like, I could go through those response letters, and, you know, there's plenty of things that we can, are technically related, you know, that are just revised per suggestion, things like that. Touch base on a few of the other items.
If you would, kind of highlight, perhaps the things that you agreed with the comments on, we can bypass those, and whether you either disagreed or made changes, you could highlight those, please.
And I guess the first thing I want to go over is a, is a change to the scope of the project. We do have a potential tenant for building number five to take the entire building. And one thing we've done is reduce the square footage of that building from 258, 258,800 square feet down to 220,000 square feet. So almost 40,000 square foot reduction. We do require similar, a similar loading area on the building, on this end of the building. So the, the footprint, and good job, by the way, of putting this together. The footprint of the building did extend beyond where that loading dock area is. And another benefit conservation wise, is we used to have a fire access road as well, even outboard of that, the building. So we've been able to pull in the significant buffer zone through this area of the project that we're able to no longer be in. As well as, there's benefits to one tenant, you know, you have one owner, you have one person managing the O and M and all the different BMPs for the project. So it gets rid of a lot of questions of who, in, in the future, who might be there. And if, we've also redesigned, in case the tenant had to leave, it's a, it's a building configuration that Condyne could also use in the future.
So, Mark, nothing on that side of the building, that building ends?
There is a loading dock area.
Okay, so a loading dock on that side?
Yes.
Okay.
These lines signifying, they're not on this plan, but as, in the, some of the other layout plans, and you'll, you'll see that. But that is a loading dock area, so we did make that change.
How much more loading, how much more truck loading docks are you adding?
Um, it was 16, I believe.
On that side?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and access, truck access would all come, there's no proposed connection here for, you know, trucks will not be rolling through the employee parking. They'll still have the ax, to access from around the, the back of the building.
And then come back out around the back?
Correct.
Okay.
So, what's the total truck, I'm sorry?
There's no longer that second shared drive to the right of that building.
We still have the...
This shared drive?
But there was an additional one on the far side of that building, correct?
No, the only thing that was ever on the far side of the building is the, the walkway that came.
Trail, the path.
The path, yeah, there was never a...
So you now have, what, 64 truck?
60 truck, not truck docks, though.
60?
60.
So this drawing, on a close up, you can see the trucks, the truck docks all in the rear of the building. And then you can see there's 17 on the far end of this building facing this way. And as Mark was alluding to, what we did was able to pull back the fire access lane to inside the truck court, which saves pushing everything back from the wetlands.
In fact, we're almost completely even out of the 100-foot buffer coming around that, that end with, with construction.
And those are still intended to be tractor trailers, or is it more smaller vehicles for kind of a last mile sitter?
Combination of both.
Okay.
Inbound would be large, and then route trucks would be local.
You may have already answered this question, but could you give us an example of a comparison to a similar building that's currently in business to the size of the, of this?
This building, what's it, 200,000 square foot building?
Horizon beverage is large, so that's 550, as in, in Norton Commerce Center.
So that's half the size of Horizon?
So half of it then, Jeff?
This is, would be half the size of Horizon Beverage, yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if you got the chance to visit the new Spears building, that's right off of South Washington, across from Commerce Way. That one's 130,000.
112,500.
112, so that one's similar to this.
To that one.
Correct.
Okay.
The...
So basically, the footprint, you're reducing the building footprint, but you're increasing the parking to basically the same distance out?
Uh, that's a very slight, the, the edge of parking is very slightly inward, but literally just a foot or two. So impervious area, does not change, change too much. But the, the fact that we don't have to wrap a 20-foot wide gravel driveway around in the space, you know, we had, we had almost 20 feet from the building to the gravel driveway, gravel driveway, shoulder, you know, almost 50 feet of development, we were able to pull away from the end of the, from this buffer zone. This is the, the 100-foot buffer. Uh, you know, we were right up against the 25 at that point. Now we're, we're almost out of the 100 for most of the project.
Mark, is that the yellow line on this highlighted?
Yes, well, the yellow line on this is the floodplain.
Okay.
The pink line is the 100-foot buffer, so we just...
So you're skirting right around it?
Yeah, we clip it a little bit on the driveway that connects. But most of the development is outside that 100-foot buffer line, in that area.
And just to, for version control, in my mind purposes, was this change reflected in what was discussed in terms of the peer review, in terms of stormwater?
It is, it's what was submitted on December 7th. We haven't had, received a formal response yet to that, so...
But this plan is in process?
Correct.
Okay.
Led to understand the review's coming soon, the second, the follow-up review is coming soon. If you want, I could go into these two letters. So I'm going to start with the one called Leonard Street South Project Narrative. And bordering vegetated wetlands, again, we're not disturbing any actual BVW.
I'm sorry, you're referring to, to which?
Which letter?
It's dated December 7th, and then down here, it says Project Narrative. It's a, it's a Condyne Engineering Group head.
Okay.
Got it.
So, quick, I'm going to go quickly on a couple of these things. The BVW...
This is one, guys, it says Leonard Street South Project Narrative.
I know.
It's the, it's the smaller one.
We're getting together here, yeah, this one. Yeah, but it's a different one, there's two Condyne letters, this is the one.
So much documentation.
Two of the same.
Oh, this is for Jennifer, this is the one?
Um, yes, it was, it says Paul first and Jennifer, so both, both groups. Yes, it's the one with the table on the second page, there's a table.
Borrow this one, because I've read it.
I don't seem to have that one.
I've got the December 7th directed to Paul, that's 30 pages or wherever many are here. I'm sorry?
Or do you want my copy?
That's building seven, building seven, building seven.
Mark, can we do the other one?
Start on the other one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody has a copy of the other one?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is the, the other one dated, again, December 7th, Condyne Engineering Response to Comment. So, again, this is a, there's a description of the comment, and then in bold and underline is our response. I'll just go down through, so it's Review of Stormwater Management Standard 1. The A is basically a statement. B is a... B is the comment regarding the floodplain elevation versus the elevation we designed the pre-treatment to be at. The consultant identified that they had concern whenever a pre-treatment structure was less than that 100-year flood elevation. They've provided a pretty extensive response to that. We don't necessarily... response to that. We don't necessarily see eye to eye on the, on the regulation that requires pretreatment structures to be above the hundred-year flood elevation. However, we have gone back and designed the project to, I think all of our pretreatment at this point is above the hundred-year flood elevation, or has intervening high ground, which means essentially is if you put a berm around it to, to protect, like the, the structures in the loading area are at elevation seventy-three versus the hundred-year flood of seventy-three point five, but the perimeter of the loading area is at seventy-three point five. So it's, protected, all the rain gardens, bioretention areas are at least seventy-three above the fifty-year storm, if not the seventy-three point five. So, you know, I've, I've provided a pretty lengthy discussion on that, but, you know, we believe things like a first flush happens, can typically happen well before a hundred-year flood. Definitely a hundred-year storm event does not instantaneously trigger a hundred-year flood. You hear stories about rivers cresting days after. So there's a, there's a lot of information here, but bottom line is, I feel we've more than met halfway, you know, we're about at eighty percent to respond to these comments regarding pretreatment and the hundred-year flood event. So that covers this item B. That's pretty much, we even had a phone conversation, an off-site, side email, kind of back and forth. So we've, that is how we've responded to that, though. We've revised pretreatment to, to a different elevation.
And we'll see how the, the engineer responds to your comments.
Yep. So I assume I want to go through this whole thing first, and then have the consultant follow up.
Yeah, although, let me just introduce Rich Clayder, is it? Who is with Horsley and Witten. Whatever you think is more productive, if you want to respond to some of these comments as we go along, or?
I think it might be, it can be complicated, but it's something you have to all of them.
Sure.
Do I need to have you in front of me?
Yeah, only so that the audience can, actually, if you just swap spots with Mark for the moment.
I'll hide back here.
So maybe I can, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Rich Clayder. I'm the president of the Horsley-Witten Group. I'm also a hydrologist. And I'm substituting for Janet Bernardo, who you were, was here at your last hearing. She has another hearing in Bolton tonight, so she couldn't be in two places at once. But I was involved in the previous review, so I, I'm pretty familiar with, with our prior comments. So the, the issue here, just to summarize our concern, and then the back and forth between some of our emails, is if pollutants are put in a surface stormwater facility and trapped in a, in a bioretention or into a forbay or something, and, and let this settle out, and a hundred-year storm comes along, you can wash those pollutants down into the river, okay? And so the infrequency of a hundred-year storm seemed to be onerous to us. So in our back and forth email, we said the fifty-year storm would be a reasonable number to keep these things out of, so that entrapped pollutants would, that are get there, are not going to get washed down into the river during a major storm event. And so our concern is because the Canoe River is an ACEC, because it's a drinking water supply, sensitivity of all that, we said, okay, design these facilities to, surface facilities where the pollutants are out on the surface to be above this fifty-year line. I agree with the applicant, with one exception, it looks like basin number five, sorry, basin number six, the bio area number six is below the floodplain elevation for the fifty-year storm of seventy-three. And you'll, you'll see they're bringing the grading back into that. So that would be something that I think we could probably work out with them to either raise that a couple of inches, literally, to sort of get that up out of that fifty-year zone. They made a comment, and I think it's a pretty important one that affects sort of a lot of our technical comments here. The Canoe River is a much larger watershed, big watershed. This project is well down along the river from its headwaters. There's a provision in the stormwater standards that basically says we have to control peak discharges to rivers for the two, ten-year storms, and possibly evaluate the hundred-year storm to see if there's going to be an increase of discharge after development. Because this site is well down the river, it's our assessment, though we don't have any data to support this, that the control onsite of the hundred-year storm is probably not necessary. It's not, it's not mandated by the stormwater standards, and it's not going to, not providing hundred-year storage is not going to contribute to flooding downstream. The reason for that is similar to what the applicant's saying, the proponent's saying, is it's a big river. If we've got a lot of rainfall across that watershed, the peak of this storm may not occur, probably won't occur, at the same time as the peak that's coming off of this site. It's a, it's a technical term known as coincident peaks. It's widely used in the industry to document, widely used to show that you don't need to provide this hundred-year management. We don't have, other than the narrative of the response, supporting information on that. And it seems to me it would make some sense, and we can talk about how we would do that, but it would make some sense if we could agree to eliminate the one-hundred-year control requirement on the site, and not even try to do that, and then just have a document that shows the Canoe River watershed, the travel time in it, and then our, our watershed, our site on that, and then we can have, for the record, a documentation of where this site lives in, in the overall watershed. So I wanted to, I wanted to kind of put that on the table here, because you, you had commented back to us that you still would like to provide the hundred-year storm management. The problem is with that is several of their facilities are below the hundred-year elevation, in fact, almost all of them. So what that means is the Canoe River would flood into these facilities and fill them up. Maybe not at the same time as their peak flow from the runoff from the site, but it would fill them up. And therefore, any storage in these facilities isn't going to be available, because it's going to be full of floodwater from the river. And you'd be better off letting that water go from the site, just leaving it, and not trying to attenuate it, because it would actually potentially cause worse, a worse flooding condition by trying to hold it back or hold the timing back. So our recommendation is for the applicant to show us in an, in a, an exhibit, and we'll put this in writing. I think one thing you did mention is when, to see your comments back from us. We've gone through the review, we have to write up the letter, we've had it a little over a week, and it's our expectation is that we'll get this out in the next, it's probably going to be before the end of the year, but we'll certainly try to do it before the, the end of this week, given the holidays are, are next week. So at least that way give them a, a plenty of time to respond to this. I, I don't know if I jumped, jumped the gun on the, on the next topic, but I, I wanted to just sort of make, because they are related. I mean, these, this hundred-year elevation versus this pollutant loading elevation. So, I mean, my, my take on it is if, if we can get that exhibit, that solves essentially number one and number two of your, of your letter, I mean, your response letter. So maybe I'll turn it back over to you and see how you want to take it from there.
Let's just, it's definitely something we will look into. I think, I agree that if you provide the necessary backup, that the hundred-year vent will not affect flooding for the area than you designed to the two and ten. So we will look into that.
But just of note, I think it's important that everyone knows, if you've been on the site, when you look and you're down in this little chip and putt area that's here, if there was ever that one-hundred-year flood that would occur, the building in the flood zone is all the way up at this level. But prior to that getting there, it's going to be across Route four ninety-five in the highway. So that whole section is going to be over and will be flooded, at the same time if it ever was to occur to come this way.
And Leonard Street, too.
And all of Leonard.
But we'll continue to, to look into that.
What's the distance from four ninety-five to Leonard?
I don't know exactly. This is, the building's about a thousand feet, so four thousand, between three and four thousand feet.
But the floodway path is designed that it flows this way, and that's why the compensatory storage was designed.
So it's more than a half a mile?
Five thousand two hundred eighty feet in the miles.
Well done.
This is a big picture of the floodplain in the area. You know, so this is four ninety-five down here. So this is all floodplain, and this is all associated with the seventy-three and a half. All of this area, you know, would, would have to, if you, if you did no runoff control at all, you're, you're talking hundreds, raising the flood elevation, if that. So we'll continue to look into that. I mean, what that, we can reduce, you know, all of our drainage significantly, really, if, if we're not doing the hundred years. So we can definitely entertain that. Having a large basin there, creating more storage, I don't know if how that could be a negative impact, but again, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that. So standard, going to standard two, these are a bunch of technical details regarding the infiltration basins. I'm not going to go too much into that. Verifying a, a certain catchment goes to a certain basin. I've revised those to respond to those comments. So C, infiltration basin one, two, three, four, just different, we've provided outlet control structures as requested in the details of the plans. Five, six, the pretreatment, as he noted on six, we can definitely look into making sure that's at least at that fifty-year flood elevation. I'll make a note on that. Shouldn't be an issue with that.
Just ask, it says basin six deleted?
Six is deleted. I think, he might be talking about bioretention six.
Base in six.
Yeah. We'll just look into that, make sure there's plenty of room to raise that berm a few inches if we have to. So number six, basin seven, basin eight. So now I'm on to D, which is after basin eight. That's just a, a detail in the, on the grading plan. We've revised that. I think E will, is again, related to the hundred-year flood and the hundred-year storm and, and how the basins are designed, including a bunch of back and forth. I think that's in the same, same thought process of what we've already discussed. I'm going to go skip by that one. So that entire, next page, another page. So I'm going to move on to standard three. It's regarding recharge volume. Again, A, B, C, D, these are just some technical calculation revisions I've made to the plans. I feel we've, you know, just addressed the comments. Four, regarding TSS removal and water quality. Again, most of these have been addressed. There is a full page of the site plans that has bioretention plantings. It's at the back of the package. Each one of those is detailed with the full planting scheme, so we've provided that. Drainage area plan has had the bioretention subareas added to it for easy confirmation, as well as we believe we meet the town of Norton stormwater bylaws of ninety percent TSS and sixty percent phosphorus with the combination between the bioretention areas and the infiltration basins. That could actually be a, a thing that, if we, I mean, we're still going to need the basins, even though it's not controlling a hundred-year storm, so we'll still get the phosphorus treatment. I was going to.
It's probably fine.
Yep. So again, those are some technical details as well with standard five. So standard six is regarding the zone two, public water supply. The first few items are statements. Down to E, we do, we are in excess of the, fifteen percent is, of the twelve acres, but we do, we are providing adequate recharge, so we meet that. Item F, we've, it's just some detailed revisions. We've revised that as necessary. The plantings, G, we've added the plantings, planting sheet, and adjusted any HydroCAD calculations that, as a result of all the previous comments. We are not a redevelopment project, so standard seven does not apply. We have updated the erosion sediment control plan. Eight, or A is basically a statement. B, anywhere we're within fifty feet to a wetland, on the erosion control plan, you'll see there's a double row silt fence. This is something conservation has typically allowed us to do, so it's pretty standard, and that relates to requirements in the SWIP. The C, we've added details and notes. We believe we'll meet all the SWIP requirements. We've added a high-flow silt sacks just to the existing, it's an existing catch basin up here, two catch basins, that we're proposing to protect. There's no catch basins on Leonard Street. There's nothing further out. So we are proposing, and those are identified on the erosion sediment control plan. We've extended the construction entrances, actually, to a hundred feet. Again, that's on the erosion control plan, but we have one in this area and one relatively close to the two proposed entrances. Limits of tree clearing, there's actually no tree clearing on the site. There are some, you know, there are, there are some trees throughout the project. We haven't identified every single tree. There's some existing trees along the existing parking lot, you know, if they're suitable to save, we'll, we'll make an effort. But we have not every, you know, we've, major tree lines, forest lines are shown on the plans, but they're outside of any work. So we haven't made any real specific provisions to save any other trees. They're pretty sparse, you know, through the process, through the project. The erosion control plan does show the stockpile areas, and they're required to be outside of the floodplain, floodplain and buffer zones. So we've added that. We've revised the O and M, added the details requested, added the description on the maintenance of those areas as requested for standard nine. Standard ten, we provided that compliance statement. Standard eleven, hydraulic calculations. We revised the plans per comment, labeled We revised the plans per comment, um, labeled anything missing, looked at the velocities in pipes, um, any of the slower velocities were, were the smaller contributing areas, but, um, we've done our best to revise, uh, pipe layouts to meet those. 12 additional comments. Uh, we've, I looked over the, number, letter A, about the adding up to different parcels. The existing parcels were listed with assessor's data, and I've gone through and, um, used our surveyor's, uh, survey and the corresponding subdivision plan we've worked out. So, uh, information on the title sheet has been updated on the acreages, and there is a slight reduction of overall acreage because of the widening to, we're proposing Leonard Street to be now this, this line, so there is a, a portion that we're taking out of our property for Leonard Street. Existing contours are shown as requested. Concrete gutter is no longer needed, that's been removed. The D, um, it's just a note, acknowledge that. And we've acknowledged that a stormwater permit is needed through the Conservation Commission. So on to review of compensatory storage. So one thing that these changes to, to the elevation of the pretreatment devices, we've been able to reduce the footprint, and it's, I've got tables in the other diagram, but we've been able to reduce the footprint of our development. However, we've had to increase the cubic feet of fill needed within the floodplain. Um, we have provided the necessary compensatory storage, and we have, um, also to go with that, when you do compensatory storage, if you fill a certain elevation, you have to provide it at that elevation. So at one-foot contours, you need to. Provide that via, um, so for instance, at the 70, 70 to 71 contour, you see that there's one low area on the site. It's right in here, the edge of the loading dock, so if you're going to fill that in, you have to provide the storage. And so we've created a plan for each one-foot interval. Um, so as you go up in elevation, you're filling, you know, a little bit bigger area because now the 72 contour comes around here, so we're filling a foot in here, and then we're filling a, in a certain amount here, and providing it the compensatory storage in another place, at the same elevations, connecting to the same flood area. It's all hydraulically connected, I think if, if you look at the red spots on that other plan. So we've provided that for all four, so basically 70 to 71, 71 to 72, 72 to 73, all the way up to 73 to 73 and 1/2. And the, the area that's affected by the, the change in that, those pretreatment devices is the loading, is primarily the loading dock area. So we had an area of fill that kind of came along and kind of came back to here because we originally had the loading dock area purposely matching roughly the existing grade, so we weren't filling that in. So now we do have some additional fill through this area. Um, you know, it's a, it's just a calculation. Um, we've been able to reduce the footprint of the development all the way around the project. Um, we can provide that compensatory storage that's needed, so we feel it's a beneficial trade-off. Um, again, there's, there's so much flood storage in the area that, um, and we feel that, and we've even had a statement now that we may not even manage the 100-year storm event, uh, because there is such a, um, large watershed area. So we've provided all those details. Horstley and Witten should be part of their review to go through all that, um, the second time. I don't know if you want to just follow up on that. And just one quick, I don't want to jump documents, but that's, this table in the other document is the summary of that.
Yeah. So our staff, um, have looked at the compensatory storage. They have, uh, what I would call minor edits or comments that really just show that the contours are tying out as, um, as proposed, and it looks like, I think their statement that they're meeting the compensatory stor, uh, storage requirements is true. And so that's the important regulatory component. It's not how much you fill in the floodplain. If you are filling in the floodplain, you have to cut in the floodplain at those one-foot intervals, and it looks like they're doing that. So my comment is, we'd consider minor edits or slight revisions to the plan that they've presented us, and we'll point those out, um, in our review letter. And then the other comments that he made about the, um, all of the basins and whatnot through those standards, we've gone through that, and I would call there some minor discrepancies between the model, the stormwater model, hydroCAD, and the, what's shown on the plans. And we'll point all of those out, and I would, um, characterize those as minor discrepancies. So, so nothing that would change the overall design. So I agree that, and we agree, that the project is in compliance with the stormwater standards, and, uh, again, we'll point that out in, in detail in our revised letter and those areas where those, those discrepancies, we'd consider discrepancies, need to be made.
So that, so on the review of compensatory storage, 13, 14, 15, 16, um, addressed, uh, re, review of groundwater protection. We do, uh, and it's, I leave a part of requirement of MEPA, every tenant gets a tenant manual on how to, which has the O and Ms included and different things like that, so we will, particularly 17, you know, we, the tenant manual, uh, gives instructions of, of what tenants need to do and how they, you know, all the different areas of importance on the site. So we're, we plan to meet 17. 18, we have no proposed areas, uh, within four feet of high groundwater, um, or properly-designed basins, we, we meet that requirement. 19, we kind of discussed already, we're providing the required recharge, um, necessary for that item. We, 20 is regarding, uh, prohibited materials stored on site. Again, we're going to work on that via a tenant manual or, there's, there's no anticipation of any, uh, anything listed in any of those, uh, regulations. We're not, there's no intention to store any of those hazardous materials.
Can I ask a question? On the maintenance and operation, um, I understand that some of the various buildings are all, I'm, I'm sure I'm not using the right words, but are using a storage basin at the bottom of, of the, of these plans. How, how do you, who, if there's different owners of those different properties, how do, who is in charge of maintaining those basins if it's jointly operated? Have you backed that out in some way?
It's going to be a deeded association that's set up amongst all the properties in the individual lots. Included in that will be easements and maintenance standards that have to be maintained. Every tenant lease that comes in, there's rules and regulations, they have to adhere to what we've set up as the standards as well, which is what we're all talking about.
And there'll be established a, an entity that will be in charge of it and charging it back?
A property management company that will oversee the day-to-day, whether it's snowplow and landscaping or anything else for the whole area.
Okay.
And, and along that line of notes, um, one thing we have added is, um, the layout plan does not show them. We've added some subsurface systems, so actually building one is managed mostly on-site now. Um, maybe we like to provide overflow, so it does have an overflow that, uh, discharges down here, but it, it manages all their runoff. Uh, so actually one, two, and three are now not connected in any way to this basin when our first sub管, way back when, um, they were, you know, like this catch basin right here managed to drain all the way down to here, so now no longer, these catch basins are managed on-site here. Um, this roof is managed on-site, and there's a drainage area here as well, and that is managed by basin three, so we've reduced that cross-easement requirement and agreement requirement, uh, pretty significantly with, uh, designs.
Is the tenant manual something that you have existing or something that you're still developing in terms of?
The, the association is in process with legal, so that's being drafted now.
Okay.
There's first and second draft that's through, so we're minor tweaks here and there. As far as the tenant manual that goes into the leases, standard rules and regulations of operating the vehicles.
Would that make sense to potentially include as an exhibit in a special permit that we issue? I'm not sure if it's over, overkill, but.
No, I think we're required to, they're required to submit it.
I don't know in terms of timing, but, or in fact, that's something.
Imagine which one you're asking for. So the association of that is a pretty long, complicated document. That's probably 30, 40 pages, and the rules and regs that's in the leases is only a two-page shortlist item.
And the other thing we can do is provide that list of, anticipated list of hazardous materials that would be stored on-site, too. I think that would.
Well, and, but that's tenant-driven. Right now we have an empty buildings.
Yeah.
So there isn't a tenant, so if a tenant comes in, usually that will be part of the permitting process.
I was going to say whether that is something that could be done prior to occupancy permit, because I don't know if, if it could be developed prior to the action of the special permit.
Well, the, the maintenance and operation is something different than what we're talking, than, than what you're talking about in terms of the, the specific uses. The maintenance operation of these catch basins, and again, it may not be a problem at this point if they're all separated.
Yeah, I mean, that's all, and part of the storm, that has been submitted. That's all available for review, the O and M, um, on all, on all those things.
I just have one question, and I'm, I'm not sure where this falls into what's gone through, a lot of it is beyond me, but there is a provision that says in an AE zone, um, proposed use, including filling, excavating, combining any existing usage shall not exceed the water surface elevation of, um, shall not increase the water surface elevation of 100-year flood more than zero inches at any point. Is that something that's been addressed?
Um, I think that's, that's that certification we have to prove that the consultant mentioned earlier, so, um, we can, you know, we'll continue to look at that and provide that necessary. I think it reads that it needs to be a certification from an engineer that.
Yeah.
The planning board needs to, uh, approve, so we'll continue to work through that item. Um, just, just.
I just addressed that by, by putting in the compensatory storage, taking into account any, any impacts your fill would have, so you can certify to that. And then this other topic about the fact that, um, this is well downstream in the New River, and doing on-site management would, would potentially contribute to an increase in the floodplain, so not doing it on-site would, uh, would not require that. So I think it, you know, if they could give us an exhibit that shows that, then I think we can sign off on that between us, and then you get the certification.
So section two, wetlands, um, just quickly, existing site conditions, that's just reviewing the, so the page of the pictures is more comments. We've added those two potential vernal pools to the plan. There's one in this, there's a wet area here, and the other one is down in this area, well outside any buffers of those. Those have been added to the plans. Proposed project, um, we've provided a narrative, that's that second letter, we'll touch base on that when we get to it. Wetlands review, um, just some comments about the ORed, and on the bordering land is subject to flooding. Um, that table has been revised. Uh, the plans, as I've shown, have been provided. Riverfront area, um, I'm going to hold off on that till we hit that narrative because I've identified the riverfront areas and impacts. Bordering vegetated wetland, the roadway is going to be, um, a separate notice of intent filing. We're proposing to widen Leonard Street, as you know, and we'll be providing some additional details on the roadway, so I'm gonna, and we're not, so these site plan submittals do not reflect the roadway comments. Wildlife habitat review, we've, um, already described that, uh, portion of the Wetland Protection Act that describes the Gulf Range as, um, extensively already altered habitat, so we believe we don't, we're not required to, um, go through the, any further on the habitat study, uh, for the, this project. The rare species, we're working outside that. We are proposing a one-time cleaning of the debris. Um, the, we do have a plan that later in the narrative that shows the areas we're proposing to clean out. Um, and it's by hand or by machine, gen, we don't want to make more of a mess than is there already, so, um, just continuing on, um, revegetation of land, land preservation. Uh, we've created a, an area management plan, which, again, I'll touch base on in that There's an administrative housekeeping, uh, section. We've, again, created some tables and some additional data in that narrative that I'll review, is the last thing we do. Additional relevant comments. Uh, the first section is mostly regarding the floodplain and things we've already discussed. The compensatory storage, under stormwater management is all, basically all the revisions we've gone through to get to this point. Review of groundwater, uh, we feel we've met those overlay districts. We've requested the special permit for the Wetland Protection District, the Floodplain No work is proposed in the regulatory floodway, so there's the flood zone and then there's the floodway itself associated with the river. There's no work proposed in the floodway. Do you want me to go through the conservation responses? I'm more than happy to, and just go through all of them.
It's up to the board, I know, obviously the Conservation Commission is dealing with this, but if you.
Um, no, I believe that they have your next meeting is like in January, probably we're better off waiting to get the results of that meeting rather than us trying to.
I agree.
Follow what you're doing at this point.
We're basically trying to adjust our comments. Again, some of them with the flood zone, compensatory storage, all that stuff. Um, on to section four, Paul's, the response to Paul's comments. Item one regarding, uh, the widening of Leonard Street and all the other off-site, uh, construction be required prior to a building permit, we're just, uh, requesting that those be completed prior to occupancy of the buildings. to occupancy of the buildings. You know, we need to get the sewer line in, obviously, before we occupy a building. We need to, proposing to get the light in before we occupy a building, and as well as widen Leonard Street.
Mark, is that, is that gonna apply to the lights on 495 as well, which are part of your mitigation?
No, different process. The lights on 495 are on a different schedule than our schedule.
But they're part of-
They'll be linked up in the end when they install the lights, when Mastott goes in and does the installation, and they'll be synced with our traffic light further down.
That was part of your mitigation plan with the MIPA, correct?
To sync the lights, Mass Highway will dictate that on that timing. We're beyond, we're outside their limit of work. Our light is gonna be installed first, prior to a certificate of occupancy by one of our tenants. Then Mastott is installing their two lights, or three lights, further down 123. And that's gonna be the first phase of the project.
Yes, that is their first priority.
First phase of that project from them should be occurring late nineteen, could be as early as twenty.
But that was part of the mitigation you proposed to MIPA was including those lights on 495?
We don't control Mastott.
I understand. I understand.
They're installing, they're paying.
The impact of traffic on this project is predicated on the mitigation you presented to MIPA that was signed off on. Is that correct?
I can't control when Mastott releases their schedule to go to construction.
I understand that.
So they're releasing their own schedule. They have their contracts in two phases, and they're doing all of 123. It's late nineteen, late 2020.
Is there some way that you otherwise propose to mitigate the traffic generated from the site?
Zero. We're coming out on the traffic light that we're installing, and everything that we're doing on-site with everything controlling Leonard and everything that we are distributing to the area through our, through our buildings.
But in terms of timing, it's probably a year to construct one of these properties from a building permit being released.
Ours, our development, we'd be looking at building permit, which would be, permit would be spring of 2019.
And it would take roughly twelve months.
Certificate of occupancy would be end of nineteen.
So the occupancy would be roughly in line with Mastott's timings, give or take what Mastott decides.
Probably six to nine months off.
And then we're phasing, the next building could be three to four months behind, so that puts us into spring of twenty-four. I mean, it, you know, there could be one large warehouse with, which is actually the lowest-producing traffic component of the project.
Yeah, full build-out, you're correct. Full build-out won't be thirty-six months for the period of time. So by the time that this is complete, Mastott will have their license.
So would it be possible to phase in your approvals? Obviously, one building going up, even if it's the one you have a tenant for, would not have the impact that the entire project would have, requiring the full mitigation of both lights.
Or, and we're not gonna agree to a phase-in. Our plan is to do the first building. Four months later, we're doing the second building. Four months later, we're doing the third building. And four months later, we're doing the fourth. That's our plan. We can't be restricted to Mass Highway that we don't control. That's the third part.
Paul, just a point of information, not a point of order. When it comes to relation with Mass DOT, is there any way to communicate with them to let them know projects in towns and cities are happening, that they may push us ahead of schedule or a schedule set in stone when it comes to development projects? I don't know. Who asked that question? Oh. Okay, Mr. Mike.
Mastott's going out to bid in July of two thousand nineteen. And as anyone that was at the public hearing on the 123 project may remember, they wanted the traffic lights put in first. So that's gonna be the first thing with this project. And how long the project takes, they're, I don't know. They're telling us their lights to be temporary for three years. They want them to be temporary for five years, just in case. So they plan on going out to bid in July and starting the traffic signals. That's, will be starting next summer. And then after that, they'll move on to the rest of the project. And their hope, obviously, would be that it's gonna be, it's a two-phase bidding of traffic lights and all the other improvements. They're hoping one contractor will come in and do everything they can find, so they can stop the lights and just keep on going.
Yeah, we all just attended a meeting last week to discuss the phasing, and they're definitely separating out those lights as their priority in phase one.
Could I ask Jeff?
Yes.
You, I imagine this was intentional. You said we're gonna build one building, followed by a second building. Were you referring to the building numbers when you said that? In other words, building one, building two?
Almost going in reverse order, right?
Correct. Building, building five is going first.
Okay.
Building four is going second. One's moved. Building seven will be third, and then building one will be the first retail.
Okay.
So the first retail component will be a year after construction starts. Ballpark?
Probably, yeah, the start, yes.
Twelve to sixteen months.
Yeah. Onto item two, A, I, or one. The exact parking spaces in which buildings they're allotted to are shown on the plan. We basically meet zoning requirements as proposed for parking. We're no longer requesting any kind of reduction for parking. As well as three on showing the future for building five. It's based on tenant requirements. It's potential. We will build those future spaces, but we're, they're just there to meet tenant requirements on that.
You currently have listed for building five, required parking spaces seventy-four, proposed a hundred and thirty? And then you have future thirty-eight. Is that wrong?
I don't have page one in front of me right now, but we can, I can just make sure the numbers add up on that.
So it's basically, you're gonna do what's, the seventy-four required, plus I guess you had future spaces you're gonna do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just, I can just make sure that's coordinated.
And then the parking on the, oh, one, two, and three. I believe some of them, and I'm okay with them, but some of them have shared parking? And some of them, you say parking relative to a different site?
What I've done is added, you'll see some notes, like there's six spaces for building two. I've kinda identified which, in order to meet the zoning, how they could be divvied up. I mean, there's not gonna be a sign that says-
Parking for building two.
Yeah, it's gonna be open and for all, right?
It will be open parking, but for zoning purposes on how I allotted it and to make sure we meet the zoning, you'll see like this says, three spaces, building one, six spaces, building two. You know, I didn't identify when it's directly in front of the building. And then as well, nine spaces, building two, four spaces, building three. Basically, this parking lot here, you know, four go this way, nine go this way, and then this parking. Otherwise, you know, all these spaces-
You're showing your math.
Just made that identification to show.
As they're different parcels, would they need some kind of reference to easements?
Yes, we, any kind of shared parking, shared utility, legally, we're preparing all the easements necessary for that.
Okay. If you could maybe just identify the numbers that are being shared. I think they're fine, I'm fine with that. I just wanna be able to know which are going where and how many spaces are.
I mean, they're shown. I just identified which ones are shown.
The other thing is, you keep on referring to those buildings as commercial as opposed to retail. Is there a reason why you're doing that?
In your parking, zoning, parking tallies, it actually describes commercial as a group of, I mean, is a bank retail? We wanna be flexible. There's no, we're not hiding anything, but commercial includes retail, includes some other items. If you, if you look in your zoning, under the parking requirements, retail, banks, different things like that are one space for two hundred. So we're, you know, it's commercial, some use that's not selling something, I guess that's not retail. It's a commercial. So we're, there's not, other than a restaurant or something that would require additional parking, we'd come back to the board. We, we do have, you know, we'd have to, you know, fit those additional required parkings in, but-
But the different uses do have different traffic requirements? And the different traffic patterns?
In relation to traffic, it's designed as a, what's the name of it? Basically, a strip center retail. It's, it's the max possible counts.
We've been looking, we've been looking at the traffic counts based upon retail, and that's what I'm a little concerned about, making sure that that's, it's retail. If you're coming back with something else, I think you need to come back to us and let us know, 'cause that impacts the traffic counts. You could say office building, if you made those all office buildings, the traffic counts during the peak hours would be off the charts. So from my perspective, I think, we've always talked about those being retail, and we're fine with that. I agree, there's some latitude as to what retail could be. But when you mentioned commercial, it could be any one of a number of things, which could have a significant impact on, on the traffic count.
And it could be a lot less.
Sure.
So in the zoning, we're meeting the zoning that we have. So we're in an industrial zone. The whole area is industrial, and this is the commercial use that's allowed within the industrial. And inside of the commercial, a subset of retail has its parking as long as everything else. I think you're trying to create a new zoning?
No, I'm crying.
I think it's an issue, because we're designing to the zoning that's here in place.
You are before us on a special permit. We understand what the zoning is. This is a special permit, and we're entitled to take into account conditions that affect the surrounding area.
Well, we're talking about parking, and other than, other than restaurants, the most, I'll call it for lack, pardon the, the language, the most punitive parking scheme is for a commercial at two hundred. And if, if we were to, limited to simply retail, it bumps up to four hundred in certain cases. So I don't know whether, what other category-
They could put in office buildings in there, and you would have a traffic count-
Office buildings are at two hundred.
I understand that, but we're predicating all of our review of traffic counts based upon retail.
Right, but I mean, since they have no tenants, what, what are we to assume?
We, we've been, we've been proposed, the information they've given us into MIPA is, is the counts based upon retail. The traffic count based on retail. As, as if they wanted to change it to restaurant. If they're gonna do something other than retail, I think they need to tell us that, and we need to review that.
Well, again, I certainly can't speak for them, because I don't market their property. But I'm assuming they don't have tenants other than the one they have referenced. I assume most of this is up for speculate, speculative construction.
We're designed to the zoning that's in place.
And didn't we discuss if, if a restaurant were to come in, that they would come back to the board?
So that's-
They'd have to, because, again, the parking-
The restaurant is under a special use. You have to come back for the number of seats.
Does the same go for any commercial, retail, or office space? Or you wouldn't need a special?
It's my understanding the retail creates, I mean, travel by any retail store right now, and the traffic is horrendous. The retail creates the worst traffic conditions. If you have an office building, ten thousand square foot office building, it's, you know, we can, I'm gonna move on.
The only question I had, just to counter Orin's opinion, was, do you need a special permit if an office building was gonna be put into one of those three buildings? Because you mentioned if a restaurant comes in, they would need a special permit, correct?
Because, from a parking perspective-
For a parking stamp, sorry.
I mean, if you have a restaurant with a very large kitchen-
So the answer is, you haven't calculated four hundred.
Right. And a restaurant is based on seats. You know, you could have a restaurant with only thirty seats, and takes up half of a building. And if we don't need new parking, and we can just summarize parking to Paul, you know, I, you know, if we're meeting parking requirements, I don't feel like, you know, that's a situation where we might not have to come back. But obviously, if we propose a restaurant that needs more parking spaces, you know, we'll have to come back, 'cause it's a modification cycle.
And office use would probably be in phase two, in the back end.
No, that could be, that could be office, is what he's saying.
Right. Office requires a space for two hundred feet. Commercial requires a space for two hundred feet. Retail requires a space for a hundred feet.
But the peak hour traffic for office is significantly more than retail.
Right, but they're also at different times than retail would be. But let's, let's-
Comment regarding existing conditions. Again, the overall tree line is shown. Individual trees within the site mostly are gonna be removed as part of the development. They're in pavement areas. We haven't identified every single tree. Number four, a very detailed landscape plan is included in the proposal now, and I think that it's prepared by a landscape architect. The, we are proposing to incorporate a system that will collect rainwater. We're, we're trying to, we are proposing to irrigate some of the lawn in front of these buildings. I've identified in the narrative how much of that lawn will be irrigated versus what's being irrigated today as part of the Gulf use. But we are proposing a collection system for a portion of the roof, which will be used when available. But we are ultimately proposing a single well to serve the site when needed. But we can go a little bit more into detail on the areas on that, in that follow-up letter. Dumpsters, screening have been shown. Directional signs. He did have, Paul had one comment about a directional sign. These two signs regarding 495, they look awfully close to the exit. What these two signs signify, as you're coming this way, there'll be a sign directing you out this way to 495. As you're coming this way, there'll be a sign on this curb directing, directing you that way.
Yeah, I was, wasn't sure. Mark and I talked, wasn't sure that sign was telling you to go left out there with the right turn. Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll just make sure those are clear on the plan. I think we've already discussed the radiuses on the, on the entrance. We're meeting the fire department requirements for that.
Right, I can confirm that. We've been working with Deputy Chief Simmons and the radius that, that Mark has provided. We're, we're okay with it. And the fire department is okay with it. I'll make that clear.
We've added a loading area in this portion of building one to address that. Future sidewalk has been shown. We've shown that there's room for that sidewalk if the bus stop ever comes to, to happen. The-
All right, Paul, quick question. The crosswalk on 123, is there any crosswalk, anywhere on 123 right now? Near the Leonard Street entrance?
Not currently. So they're proposing the crosswalk?
This one. We're proposing this one here.
Okay.
We're just not proposing to, to send anybody to this corner.
Yeah.
We have no land area.
Right.
And there isn't. So this one is proposed.
Okay.
Somebody's walking a dog, and they can get there.
We're gonna continue to work, I mean, as far as the driveways, we're still proposing, still have a thirty-foot wide driveway. We feel that's suitable for this type of use, but we can continue to work with the building inspector if we need to. And Paul, there is some room on both areas to come up with a compromise if you'd like to. We feel fifty feet is just, you know- We feel 50 feet is just, you know, believe it or not, we're trying to not pave when we cannot pave in a 50-foot driveway for these internal driveways. Is excessive. I don't know if you want to provide any additional feedback on that.
I just want to just add on a little to what Mark's saying is that Building Commissioner Carmichael and I think could work with Condyne. We've gone out to a few sites around town as well as Mansfield and Taunton, have a sense of what those other projects that are similar to this, what they're using. So we'd like to work with them and then come back with you, to you, and provide you with justification for whatever those dimensions are. And I think what we can also do is provide you with some, what the actual driveway widths are for some of the other developments, including the large warehouse development in Mansfield, which we can give you that information. I would also just agree on this 50-foot standard is, I don't know why it was put in there, you know, it's been there for a while, but it's, that's a very large amount. I would like to down the road propose changes to the, a number of changes to our bylaws, our bylaw. But that's one I'd really like to look at and maybe have a little bit more discretion for that. You know, in addition, in an area with all this environmental sensitivity, you know, having a 50-foot wide driveway, which is wider than any street pretty much in most of Norton, I would rather reduce the impervious cover here where possible. But obviously, we want to make sure this is safe for vehicles.
Paul, are the projects we're looking at combining a driveway using retail and warehouse space?
I don't recall that we looked at any, but I know that, remember Jeff, you said that you've built them, so we'd want to look at that too. But I know what we had looked at did not do that, but we want to take that and obviously take the retail component into consideration.
And the only other thing is, I just noted there's an operational handbook for the planning board. Says the planning board will not weigh the requirement on street widths. I don't know if that applies or not. That's in the operational handbook.
Okay, because, okay.
We've never seen an operational handbook.
What are you referencing?
The Planning Board Operational Handbook, page 12.
It's not part of the bylaws. It's the handbook that we.
We could go into the definition of a street versus common driveway if we want to argue over that.
I don't know if it applies. I'm just noting, just so.
These are common driveways. But it would need, if we go below, obviously, we would need to do this as a waiver to the 50-foot.
The comments, we've addressed other parking space related comments, landscape related comments. I think we're, we've identified the walkway. We're just, we're going to use a reclaim material on that walkway. How will the town-owned properties be accessed? There's no access from the walkway to, I'm not sure which town-owned properties. There's some, these, I'm not sure which you're identifying, but there's no further access provided other than the crosswalk or potential footpath to the end of it. We're still, we'd love to provide some benefit to the town, you know, a potential, you know, small conservation parking area and access down through the entire site back to the Kenee River. So we're continuing to look at things like that, but right now we have just the walkway proposed to a crosswalk at this point.
So we'll continue to work with the mon. I think this is an exciting opportunity to have public access to the, you know, through these natural areas. If we're able to get the trail all the way down to the river, that could be wonderful access. If that's not feasible, then we can continue with this, although I would say that the, if we were able to do that, the opportunities for the public using it would be greater than, you know, connecting the projects on both sides of Leonard Street.
And we've addressed the remainder of the comments. We're still working with the fire department on the appropriate capacity solution. We've gotten a couple of proposals from them on what the best solution for their lack of capacity for the area is. But we will, obviously, that needs to be worked out prior to any kind of occupancy. So a lot of the items have been addressed.
Just going back in item, I think it's KL, this is about the moving the buildings forward. You reference only one aisle row of parking is proposed. I believe you just added a second row of parking in front of building two.
Yeah, we've, basically one aisle with double stack parking. I mean, to have, it just, it optimizes a parking lot. To have a full, the widest part of a parking lot is that drive aisle, whether you have parking spaces on one side or not. So it optimizes your use of that drive aisle to have parking on both sides to gain that required parking we need. That is what we're proposing. We're, again, it's a, it's a single aisle with parking on both sides of that aisle.
So you're having cars coming up off of, what's the speed limit off of 495, we know? I'm just concerned now you're coming into that driveway and people are looking, trying to find a spot. I hate to see them slowing up and looking to try to decide going left or right. That's my own thinking. Now you've got, in most cases, you have parking lots further in, off of the road. So people have a better sense of getting, clearing that turn. And again, I'm just concerned with the heavy degree of traffic that's going to be flowing there behind them and backing that up if they slow up. Because you've got traffic going out of that aisle at the same time you've got it coming in. And those traffics are coming from behind the building as well as from the front of the building.
And one thing the revision did do is add, I think I had an old version, the, I'm not that right on your thing, but the parking was all pushed closer so the drive, we've actually added, the revision added basically a parking space length cube to where this is. Have that in our older version. I don't know.
They've given roughly a 10-foot buffer out of the aisle. Before the, between the.
Correct. I could provide a dimension on the plan. We have almost 40 feet to here, so another 20-foot aisle. This intersection is about 60 feet back from the.
You also, this is an old question, but you have behind both buildings a 15-foot one-way something. What's the purpose of those? The 15-foot?
It's, it's an option for some sort of drive-through. We understand you have a difficult drive-through bylaw, but there, it's a placeholder for, you're talking about this one-way right here?
Yeah, it's behind both buildings, I believe.
Here, this is loading area, and this is loading area. There's no, this is the only place on site, you know, potentially a bank window or a CVS window or something like that, but it's a placeholder we've allowed on the site for that. And we understand, you know, your bylaw is difficult.
Yeah, that's a special permit for driving. But that begs the question, what do you do for loading area for that?
Just provided an offshoot loading area for that. Because doors would be, yeah, I mean, they would have to.
There wouldn't be a dock up in the building. It would be, yeah, it's not a loading dock.
There's no loading docks over here, over here.
It's just back door.
Place for a UPS truck or a straightbed truck.
Well, just on that area, I'm sorry, it came up before. You had a truck turning radius and it showed lines going into that shaded area. I wasn't sure what that was.
Yeah, I mean, again, the intention for loading for this type of building is more of a box truck. I did, however, show that even a semi could pull in along the back of this building and make a maneuver and get out. But there's no, there's no trucks, you know, backing into a dock door. There's no dock doors on it. These are just.
Is that needed for them to make that turn?
That's what needed.
He was providing, showing it could be done even if it wouldn't be done.
That's not the intention, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is more of a big, just a large parking space, basically, is what that. Again, a lot of times a building this size, UPS pulls up in front, gets out, you know, runs things in. But, you know, we're providing for a routine delivery system that they could pull into that spot and pull out and go.
And it'd be fun of that. You have, something's called a mountable concrete area.
Right here?
No, yeah, there or in the beginning of the driveway, top of the driveway.
This is to, again, with, along with driveway widths, we want to give discreet lanes for cars to keep cars in the right spots. And what this is, is, you know, will be a concrete slight berm, something that a truck could drive over, but it also provides that driving lane. And here as well, you know, you don't want a car to have the flexibility to just meander all over this place. We're trying to get them in a lane so that they know where to go, they know where to come out and how to get in. Also allowing access from a semi to go over that area if necessary, but it's to, it's to provide that direction. If you don't have that, you know, a car could turn here, it could, you know, it's line striping in order to provide appropriate direction to drivers.
So the trucks can use that for the turn?
Yes.
And then one other thing is, you have the bus stop. Is there an area to turn around? How does the buses turn around?
Again, we've had a number of meetings with Gatcher. They have no specific intention right at this point. They're trying to and they're, you know, they're working through planning stages. And as far as we know, they would come into the site, go into the bus stop and come out and go back. Either go back that way. That's the, they felt that was the best place for it versus there's no room, you know, you can't add a bus station out here on the right turn. So that's the intention of the bus station if it, if it ever happens in the future. I'd like to just go through the last narrative document and skip through a couple of sections of that. So what this does is just, it outlines our impacts to the wetlands, the floodplain. The, and it also identifies what could be, what the existing impacts of the existing development has on the property. So the boarding vegetated wetlands, again, we're not touching wetlands. We are doing work in the buffer zone. We've reduced work in the buffer zone through the different revisions of the project. Flood zone, we've pretty much gone through this. There's been comments in the past that we're filling 6.6 acres of wetlands. That's not the case. We're altering some floodplain. I've identified, we're actually reduced over a half acre of floodplain alteration. And then I just also identified that the 6.1 acres of alteration is drainage basins. It's more, it's more green space and we're actually only paving, or it's not even pavement, 2.41 acres of impervious area where almost an acre of that is clean roof runoff. So we've just identified those impacts on the site as well as there's the flood zone storage table, compensatory storage table. That's been reviewed by the consultant. Onto the riverfront area, we've significantly reduced what will be considered used area. So this is the, the riverfront area. This arc coming along here, so there's significant portions of riverfront that are being mowed, being fertilized, irrigated. All of the area of riverfront over here.
Can I, just a little technicality, Frank just left. Frank missed one meeting. He can't miss more. I would suggest you stop when it's your decision because you need a super majority on the special permit. If we cut this off at this point, Frank has not disqualified himself from participating. That's your call. I'm just.
That's fine.
We'll stop.
And Rich, I think the bulk of your comments were, and advice were already offered. So we'll be seeing someone else from your firm or perhaps yourself. All right, again, I apologize, but I don't want to trip this process up because someone missed five minutes of a second meeting. Again, that's your call.
I just, I wanted to get into fertilizer discussion.
Probably something that Frank will regret he missed.
I was excited about that. We'll skip that.
Somehow government and fertilizer discussions go hand in hand.
No comment.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll close this evening's portion of the public hearing. Is there a motion to continue to, the eighth?
It was on our minutes. Whoever has page two of those minutes.
It's been a motion to continue to January 8th, 2019. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, do we open the next one?
We'll have to do the same.
Open and continue?
You can, he can, since this is the first session, again, I'll leave it to you. He can miss one, the rule is you can miss one meeting. So this will be the meeting that he missed and he can make up for that so we can continue or proceed with the first hearing on.
We don't have comments back from.
We do, but if it's on the eighth, it'd be okay to just begin discussion on the eighth.
I'm sorry.
We'll postpone discussion until the eighth.
That to the eighth meeting.
All right, why don't we?
So we'd open it on the eighth?
It's been advertised.
Just open it and continue is how you do it with no discussion then?
Yeah, but the Mullen Rule, how would that apply?
You would have to open your meeting, the public hearing, and then vote to continue.
Right, I'm just wondering with Frank's absence, he take.
Does this count as his one?
I don't think it counts as his one.
There's no discussion. There's no.
I just, again, walking on eggshells here. All right, is there a motion to open the, the public hearing for?
Continue the current meeting first.
I'm sorry?
Motion to continue.
We just did.
We did. Is there a motion to open the, well, I'll open, I don't need a motion.
Need a motion to open it, yeah.
I'll open the, the public hearing for building seven.
I'll move that we continue the public hearing until the next meeting?
January eighth.
January eighth.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second to continue the hearing to January eighth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. That, I'm sorry, did you?
It's okay, I'm helping her. I got the first, the motion to continue the public hearing to January eighth. So that's for building 105. Then Joe opened the hearing for building seven.
Right.
Tim, then motion.
Continue. Steve Jurzick seconded. Mark Jeff. Mark Jeff, happy holidays to you guys.
Happy holidays.
Enjoy.
See you next year.
Everyone enjoy the time off, hopefully. I'd say it too. Thank you.
Yes, we do.
All right, Nicole's got it. That's okay. We're team.
Were you trying to...
Oh, I just asked her to do something for me, and now I don't have to, because I'm going to recuse myself. I'm sorry, I'm glad Julie told you what I did, I have no idea, so.
No, it's okay, we got it. We got it. We opened the, the public hearing for seven, immediately continued it, and then that way meets the advertising requirements, but no discussion was missed on Frank's part, so I think we're good.
That should work.
Okay.
Okay, so.
All right, let me get back to, all right, the last item on the agenda is actually a public hearing on a proposed zoning article offered by the Board of Selectmen concerning solar facilities. The, do you have the, do you have the advertisement for any chance? The public hearing was...
I do.
Advertised in the Sun Chronicle as required.
I will get it.
Oh, it's all right, it's obviously a matter of ultimate public record, so. It was advertised in the Sun Chronicle, seven and fourteen days in advance.
Right, so last, right, I, I'll have to pull it, I don't...
So at this point, I'd, I'd do two things. I'd open the public hearing, but recuse myself because my family has been approached in the past, I don't know if anything will come of it, but my family has been approached in the past for a potential solar development. So again, I'll recuse myself and leave Steve in charge.
Okay, so, a memo was delivered by Mr. Units, town manager, to Joe Fernandez, Chair of the Planning Board, referencing, dated December 14th, at its meeting of December 13th, Board of Selectmen voted to refer the following matters to the Planning Board for its nine non-binding recommendations, that being proposed amendment, Norton zoning bylaws, chapter 175 of the general code, article 22, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations due to timelines. Would you kindly recommend, would you kindly provide the Board of Selectmen with the Planning Board's recommendation at your earliest opportunity, that being this evening, and advise me of the date these matters will be on the Planning Board's agenda? And I believe Mr. Units is here, and a couple of the representatives as well. Mike, would you like to kick it off? Paul, any comments before we get started?
I can kick it off.
Okay.
Okay, well, there are really two main parts to this bylaw, and we'll go, go into those. We're, we're promoting or making changes to promote solar, large-scale ground-mounted solar by right, we'll go into that. That would help us in our efforts to become a green community. The other major provision or change in here is to allow solar facilities within cranberry bogs. And this is the one that was the primary reason why the Board of Selectmen scheduled a special town meeting on, on January 14th. And we have Representative Adam Schumacher, who's going to talk about that, but there is a timing issue here. So with it, what I'd like to do is I can cover the by right provisions and then answer your questions, and then turn it over to Adam to, who can answer the, any questions you have about the placing solar facilities within cranberry bogs. So, for, for, as of right, again, we are seeking to become a green community, which, through the state's Office of, of Energy Resources. And there's a multi-step process to doing it, and the first step is to create, allow solar by right. There are a few major benefits to the town to becoming, for becoming a green community. One, of course, is be able to have access to funds, to grant funding, particularly to be able to develop any renewable energy-producing facilities. So, for example, as we're hopeful to build a new town hall, maybe we were able to get solar and have some reimbursement for it. They can also provide, the Green Communities Program can also provide technical assistance to the town to help us with our renewable energy needs. There's a few more things, but it's, these are really important to us. Many towns in Massachusetts have qualified, and actually the majority of them have, and so we would like to also do that. So this is the first step. So, the, the, the primary change in this, currently, if you were a large-scale ground-mounted solar facility, I'm not going to go into photovoltaic, won't be able to pronounce it, but essentially, if you're, if, if you're a solar facility producing over 250,000 kilowatt, 250,000 kilowatts, you are ground, you are a large-scale facility. And currently in our bylaws, you have to have a special...
250 kilowatts.
Kilowatts, I'm sorry, 200, all right, that would be real significant, yes.
250,000 watts, 250 kilowatts.
50 kilowatts, thank you. You have to get a special permit and a site plan. A special permit if you're building it in R60 and R80. Looking at the state's model bylaws for by right, they recommend, they're, what they recommend is eliminating the special permit aspect, and, but we would still have the site plan requirements to fall back on. So we, we are proposing that language. I should also say, we have had our, our town council from KP look at it. We've, also have had the Green Communities Liaison look at it. They were supportive of it. There's, there are a couple of things still, we still want to point out. Special permits would still be required where we do already, like if you're in a drinking water protection zone, you're still required to do it. If you're in wetlands, you, you still have to do the special permit, along with the site plan. So the benefit still is, the site plan is where all the details are, anyway. So the difference really is, with the, with the special permit, you need a super majority to approve it versus a site plan, which is a, just a majority. We still have noticing requirements that are the same. The public still has an appeal right under a site plan. So again, the major difference is here where we would eliminate the need to, to do the special permit for R60 and R80.
Just in terms of procedure, so the special town meeting is January...
Fourteenth.
So our recommendation as a board is something that we need to do at this meeting, period?
Correct, and I'll make whatever changes you all require, and then we would get that moved quickly this week. Go through the process, work with Mike, and get that out.
Okay.
I noticed the required documents in the bylaw. I might be jumping ahead, but is this something that is in the, our bylaw for solar already, or is this an addition?
We've had the bylaw in place since 2014, so the changes that we're discussing tonight are in the strike-through underline. That's just an addition, right.
Just the track changes.
Just the track changes.
So, any previous solar facilities should have already submitted operation and maintenance plans and all that?
And they still have to.
Okay.
If they're, if they're large scale.
I'm just thinking, and for smaller-scale facilities, what, where does the...
Currently, currently, the, the bylaw does not talk about them, so that's why we added a provision in here that talks about something less than the large, large scale. But the process has been that if a small scale comes in, they work through the building commissioner, work through the building permits. Site plans could be required, depending if they trigger the site plan, but typically, they'll work with the building commissioner, who will enforce the zoning requirements. So if it's a smaller scale, and Orin, you had the question about, would these setbacks that are for the large scale apply? They would not for anything under the 250 kilowatts. But the setback requirements and all the other dimensional requirements of the zoning category would apply.
But this wouldn't be, would this be a structure, where you'd have to meet the set, the site garden setbacks?
Yes, it would.
It's the same as a shed, or...
Mm-hmm.
Just a really shiny shed, okay.
Yes, but they do have, they are required to meet all the setback requirements and the lot coverage.
That applies to commercial as well as residential.
Yeah, they are allowed in, the large-scale, the large-scale ground-mounted are allowed in commercial, industrial, R60 and R80. Let me just confirm that.
I thought they were all allowed, that's right. I thought the issue came up with the, with the bogs.
Right, I'm sorry, they are, but for the large scale, they're in commercial and industrial, and then R60 and R80.
Does this...
The others would, I'm sorry, the others would, Chris, correct me, but I believe if they're smaller scale, they're allowed in all zoning categories.
It's an allowed right, yes.
As an allowed right, but having to meet the dimensional standards.
It'd be an accessory structure, so I guess they would have to meet any setback requirements. As the zoning enforcement officer, I would have to ensure that, and then you would be signing off on...
Right.
Does this bylaw update the use table?
No, because the use table actually just references this bylaw.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't list whether it's a yes, no, or special permit. It's actually a dash through it, and then it just, in the definition of it, it says, see article 22.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I had, I had sent in some comments to you. I don't know if you had a chance to review them, either with counsel or with anybody else. I don't, I certainly defer to counsel. I just was reading through it, and I thought these were notes that I was calling out.
Yeah, I, I, Mike, I'm not sure if we've sent those to counsel, but, okay. But you're, the primary one you had was adding the provision to say as of, or, as an allowable use.
Yeah, I was just concerned, because standing by itself, this is development, may proceed without the need of a special permit, amendment, waiver, or any discretionary approval.
What, what, just can you say which, where are you reading?
Second page of the document. Article five.
And I was just looking, you know, as of right citing criteria provided by DOR makes it clear that it provides for the allowed use without unreasonable regulations, more specifically, may proceed without the need of a special permit. So it, it was talking about the use being subject to this, waiving all the, the approval rights. And that's fine, that's what, that's what I understand it to be. I just, my concern was, without that language referencing to the use itself, it talks about, can proceed without any waiver or, or discretionary approval. And there's waivers throughout our bylaw, even the, the solar bylaw. So I just, for me, it was a little bit more consistent, and in reading the DOR regulations, it seemed that that's what they were getting to, and I have no problem with that. But I, again, I defer to our counsel.
Yeah, we, we'll get that to them. I'm not an attorney, but I think your, your addition is fine.
Yeah, I mean, we want to hold it up. I mean, if they say it's fine, I mean, we're, the problem we have now is, I don't want to say something and then have a problem and not being able to put it forward if it's appropriate. That's what I was hoping, we'd get their response before that. And the other thing that I was, I was looking at is, for the, the smaller scale, and I understand it's not that important, but the language you have now is, is that it, to acquire a building permit, it must comply with the applicable provisions of this chapter. I don't know what chapter is, maybe section?
Oh, article.
Yeah.
Article, okay.
As determined by the building commissioner in conjunction with the Director of Planning and Economic Development. I have no idea what that's supposed to be.
Well, again, that, that goes back to the process of how we do things now. When a smaller scale comes in, they'll, typically what happens is, they'll go to the building commissioner with their request, with a, for a building permit. He'll look through, why don't you explain, probably better hearing it from you?
Yeah, that's fine. So, yes, any smaller-scale solar project, what, what?
So people watching at home can hear you.
So, Chris Conmichael, building commissioner. So any smaller-scale solar project would, they would just apply for a building permit. And within that building permit, I would, again, treat it as an accessory structure, so they would meet zoning setbacks. We would look at, I would get several department head signatures signed off, most notably planning, as it's laid out in the bylaw. Would also be looking at fire. Electrical inspector would also be requiring a permit. Conservation would be getting a sign off. So it, it, all the department heads would be, and all the concerns from within each individual department would be addressed. So it's, it's not like it's just gonna, I'm gonna sign off on it. Each department head would, would address it and have their individual concerns.
One of my responsibilities then is, as, as Chris is the zoning enforcement officer, is to confirm that the dimensional requirements are met, so that, you know, that's where I would come in, is to, is to ensure that that happens, and then obviously, the other departments are weighing in on their, on their issues.
So is it complying with the applicable provisions of this bylaw, or the bylaws in general? I, I wasn't clear. If you're comfortable with it, I mean, I guess, I was just trying to...
We will be comfortable with it, and then it, it goes through the building code, it goes through the electrical code, and then it also goes through the fire code, as for shut offs and safety and plaque cards. So yes, we, we will be addressing all aspects of it.
But that's something you would do regardless.
Absolutely.
So I'm not sure, because it says, you'll comply...
You just referred to the wording, right, Orin?
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm fine with the process, I just want to make sure...
It should say article, I think, is what you're doing.
Right, and if you all are okay with that, I'll change that to article.
Yes.
Well, but, but it's, all of the bylaws are just the article. So are there other provisions? I'm, I'm not sure what, what it is you're going to suppose to look to. And I'm happy to, I've been talking...
Well, in the context of the zoning, it's this article, but this article also references to, back to site planning as well, so we feel that that covers it. Really isn't any other provision in here for, for solar that we would be...
Setbacks, if you're going back to the...
The other thing you...
Right.
Everything's subject to setbacks, so I, I would be requiring that regardless.
Right.
So I review everything for that. Tim, you had a question?
As part of the setback, whatever else to review, I'm just envisioning however big it is, because the solar panel is shifting throughout the day, and obviously, there's potential for, I'm just imagining, sun shining off solar panel in people's eyes on the road. Is that...
That's one type of installation.
Right, but I guess, is that...
Some of these larger scales require some fencing and screening around them, and I'm sure that we could, well, we do have a lighting bylaw, so if, if it triggered that, it would be going onto the road or off the site by so many candlewatts, we, I would be addressing that as an enforcement officer as well.
On a smaller scale as well as a larger?
Yes, I, I just addressed something with Paul last couple of weeks ago, so as, as it pertained to lighting, so, yes, we enforce that as well.
It seems like a weird question in terms of, like, it's not a setback, but it's something else, so it's covered under the...
We cover all the screening and the bushes and, and the fencing around that as well, so we, we do enforce that.
Maybe it's better, maybe instead of article, maybe we just say by, bylaw, where we say the applicable provisions of this bylaw, because then that is even broader, if that gets to your issue about the setbacks. Because I think you can interpret that. Of course, we'll have to run this through the, you know, the town council. On it, but it would allow us the...
It's identified as article five, right?
I'm sorry?
It's identified as article five, right? Well, article, article five draft, article 22.
But if we just say of this bylaw, then...
It's all encompassing.
It's all encompassing.
And then, and then if you renumber, it's not all messed up?
So if, if you are okay with changing chapter to bylaw, we would still, you know, contingent on getting counsel to approve. We'll get that done tomorrow and send off to them.
Now, procedurally, if there's a revision to that, or some other recommendation, would that need to come back, that would need to come back to us to approve or...
If it was all small scale, I would just do an amendment to the plans, and then again, get sign offs from the appropriate departments. So a small scale, we would take care of it in-house. Large scale, we'd get kicked back here.
Yeah, I'm just terming in terms of this process of giving our recommendation to this warrant. this warrant, um, and the changes associated with that, we need to ultimately give recommendation for that final version.
Yes.
Um, so at some point, we would need to.
We'll make a motion. So I guess as far as the language on.
Yeah, we would.
We would want to go back and make sure we're okay with, uh, the, the language of changing chapter of bylaw and Orin's suggestion. That way we.
Right.
Are you saying, you know?
Well, we're not.
If they make changes, then they make them again?
Yeah, yeah, how are we?
If town council does?
There's no time to allow for that.
If town council does, well, you, you do have another meeting before the January fourteenth.
They need for a warrant now. What, what if we would just, we would, we would make a recommendation that we're okay with the language, we would recommend that change subject to review by council? And if they review it and they want to make the change, they can make it, if they don't, rather than, because.
Our recommendations are non-binding anyway in this situation, so, they're suggestions.
We'll put yours forward, un, unless town council comes back.
Yeah, but I, I don't think, I don't think we want it coming back to us for final approval, because that'll throw you off.
Right.
So we want to make a recommendation subject to review and approval by.
Okay.
Because this is a public hearing, you know?
Okay, so whenever you all are ready to make that motion and.
Let, let Mr. Yunis.
And any minor changes are always allowed at town meeting, you can't have major changes, because then everything would have to come back for another hearing, but if one word is changed here or there for any reason by council or town meeting, that would be fine. But you should make your recommendation on what you believe.
Okay.
And then that'll get forward to the selectmen, the finance committee and, uh, town council.
So are you ready to make a recommendation? Yeah, you know, there, there were.
Go through the cranberry bog section, right?
Yeah, we, yes, we still have to talk about the cranberry bogs.
Right.
Let's not get bogged down now.
So if the folks would.
Sure.
Come up and please state your name again.
Adam Schumacher with Nuxon Energy, and with me is Stacy Munahan from Beals and Thomas, she's our, uh, wetlands and permitting consultant. And, um, I think, yeah, Stacy, if you wouldn't mind setting up the, the nice renderings that, um, she prepared, it would give you a, a nice visual aid of what we're talking about. Uh, but, but overall, um, we're here today because, um, the SMART program, which I'm not sure i- if you're familiar with, the SMART program is the, is the new solar incentive program that's, um, following, following up on the SREC program. And, um, the SMART program has a, an interesting component to it called a, a dual-use agricultural solar component. And so that's where the cranberry bogs come into play, uh, because we, we believe that cranberry bogs are, uh, very well situated for this dual-use, um, aspect, and, um, you know, there's multiple benefits provided to the town from a project like this, um, in keeping, um, agricultural, um, uh, operations viable, um, you know, so the component under the SMART program requires that, uh, the solar project be designed in a manner that allows for the continued operation, um, of the underlying agricultural, um, uh, lands. So we are required by the state, uh, to continue growing and harvesting the crop, um, to the best of our abilities with the, um, the solar array, um, existing, uh, over the top and, and the solar array needs to be spaced far enough apart and raised high enough so that, um, at least fifty percent of the sunlight that would have otherwise made it to the ground still makes it through. And also that spacing is to allow for, um, uh, farming equipment, uh, to still be able to, to work through there and for, um, you know, uh, farm workers to be able to work underneath and around the, um, solar equipment as well. And, so, the reason for the rush on this is that the, um, the SMART program has, uh, been in development over the last two years, and, um, that's right around the time that the SREC program, um, was basically allocating its final capacity. And, uh, the SMART program officially opened, um, the week after Thanksgiving, so, two, three weeks ago, and, um, in national grid electric territory, which is where we are here in Norton, um, out of the five hundred and forty megawatts that are allocated to national grid service territory, um, uh, four hundred megawatts were, um, subscribed instantly. Um, and that's because there is such a backlog in the, in national grid territory, which is comprised of, you know, all of western Massachusetts and pockets, um, here in southern Mass, in southern eastern, southeastern Massachusetts. So we, we have probably two or three months until the final capacity of the SMART program is fully subscribed. And at that point, there's no, um, there's no remaining or alternative solar incentive program that we could pursue for a project like this, so, um, that's why, uh, we, we went to the select board and, and requested, um, that, uh, you know, asked, asked for them to take this up at a special town meeting, because that's the only way that, that this project can be viable. And so, as I mentioned, we believe that these, um, dual-use, uh, projects have multiple benefits, not only in keeping farmland, uh, in farming operation, uh, but also, you know, producing clean energy, of course, and providing significant property tax revenue to the town. And, uh, we have, the, the select board, um, approved a pilot program for the project, uh, last week, uh, for two hundred thousand dollars per year for the next twenty years, which is four million dollars over twenty years, so that's a lot of, um, uh, benefit to the town that can be brought, um, from a project like this. And, um, so that's why we're, we're here before you and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, yes.
You mentioned the, the sunlight metric, is there a, like, before and after production metric for the facility that you, for the cranberry bog that you need to meet, or is it kind of, if you're getting enough sunlight, you're going to grow as many cranberries as you can, so?
It's a great question, and it, it's the latter. So the, um, Department of Energy Resources, who administers the SMART program, and the, um, EMDAR, the Department of Agriculture, team up, um, to ensure on a annual basis that the farm is still being actively farmed and, and managed, um, you know, according to best management practices, but they do not have a specific yield requirement, kind of understanding that it varies based on weather and.
Yeah.
Any conditions, you know, so, so as, as long as there is a, um, a legitimate attempt to continue farming the property using best management practices, that satisfies the requirements.
And what happens if the facility fails to meet those best practices?
Uh, then, then the, uh, facility's at risk of losing the, uh, the dual-use incentive, um, and, which would be a, um, a major problem for the project's financing. And, uh, so that is something that any system owner that has a project like this is going to be very careful to maintain in compliance, because it's a, it would be a disaster if that incentive was taken away.
Is there, is there an estimated reduction in the yield, or is it?
So the, um, the design, uh, requirements for the, for the dual-use projects were established based on a pilot project done at UMass Amherst, uh, and that pilot project used a variety of crops, like five or six crops, they, they did not use cranberries unfortunately, but there is like kale, beans, um, lettuce, swiss chard, and a handful of crops, and, and they found, um, that in twenty sixteen, which was a, a hotter summer than normal, uh, the crops underneath the solar panels actually produced better than the crops that were not, um, underneath the panels. And, uh, in twenty seventeen, which was more of a typical summer, um, the crops underneath the panels, depending on the croc, on the crop, produced somewhere between fifty and eighty percent of what the crops that were not covered produced. So, uh, our, you know, best guess is that they'll produce somewhere around seventy-five percent of what they will otherwise, but it's, um, it is, it's a new, it's a new concept and, um, and it's going to take, you know, a couple years to, to see, um, where that yield ends up. But we're, we are very optimistic that they, that the vines will continue to be healthy, and that's based on not only that data coming out of UMass Amherst, but also, uh, there's a couple, um, just standard, ra- regular solar projects like, like we have here in town, um, installed on cranberry bogs in Carver. And, um, even though, so nothing was done to help facilitate continued growth of the vines, um, but even, so even under that standard design, um, after a couple of years, those vines are, are looking very healthy, um, and, um, and are growing berries, even though it's, um, not, uh, not a dual-use design. And we've got, um, pictures of, of that, um, that we'd be happy to share, and so I think that, seeing that this, you know, through this growing season, um, was a very important piece of the puzzle for a lot of, uh, regulators, because, um, one big thing that happened, uh, in early October was that the, um, D E P, the Department of Environmental Protection, came out with policy guidance, um, supporting the use of dual, or supporting dual-use solar projects in wetland cranberry bogs. And so the, um, basically, D E P came out and said, you know, we recognize that these cranberry bogs are not typical wetlands, even though they're designated as wetlands, you know, they're, they're heavily, um, heavily impacted, um, wetlands in the sense that, you know, they're, uh, pesticides are being applied, they're constantly being managed, um, with equipment, and so they're, you know, being certainly, you know, significantly, um, um, manipulated, um, on a daily basis. And so, you know, by adding solar panels to an active cranberry bog, D E P, D E P's perspective is that it will not change its current function as an altered wetland resource.
I ask if, and Chris or Mike, if, um, do we know how many cranberry bogs we have in Norton, how many acreages that may encompass? If we know, I'm just curious myself.
I know we have old cranberry bogs down behind the water and sewer department, and I think there's one other location, not as large as, uh, this cranberry bog camp, but I only can think of one other small.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, just can't say I've come across them, so.
One off Bay Road.
The Bay.
This is.
This is Bay Road.
Oh, this is Bay Road, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good point, that the, our project is on Bay Road, but this would apply to any cranberry project in town. I think that the bog off of Bay Road is by far the largest, like Mike was saying, and, but there are a couple other smaller ones in.
Does Bay Road go ahead and towards the eastern?
Correct.
Town line, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And would this be for all of that bog, a portion thereof?
A portion.
Okay.
Uh, it's roughly, it would be around sixty acres of the bog, and the bog is, um, the, the actual bog area is a hundred and ten acres.
Okay.
It's a little over half.
But do we know there's more than one bog that we're affecting?
Uh, the, this bylaw change would apply to any bogs in town.
Would apply to all.
Are there other bogs? I don't want to, I would not spot zoning.
There are other bogs.
There are other bogs.
And actually, one of the reasons that the, um, select board was, uh, interested in it was because the, the town actually owns a cranberry bog.
Right.
And, um, the town was thinking that this, um, bylaw could also help to do a solar project on, on that bog.
Okay, any other questions? Use of a, it's not what I would have thought of as a place to put solar, but.
Yeah, I know.
The more I think about it, the more I'm like, well, it's a large, open, flat space.
Right, exactly, it's actually kind of an ideal spot for a solar project, uh.
If you get more than fifty percent of the yield, it's, it's at least worth it.
Right, right, that's the, the nice thing about it is, you know, we're, we're actually optimistic about the, you know, more optimistic than fifty percent even for what production is going to be.
If you only get eighty percent, you could just cut it in half and put all the panels on one side.
Right, right.
Well, the financial incentive.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
Alone is, is probably going to make up for any potential loss.
That, that's the, that's the exact theory behind it.
Yeah.
There's going to be a loss in yield, but it will be made up for, um, you know, and positively compensated for by the incentive, and, and so that's, you know, that the state is seeing a lot of farmers, not only cranberry growers, but all types of farmers really struggle to make it in this.
Yes.
Um, you know, in Massachusetts, and, so this is meant to help diversify revenue and keep farms going.
Yeah.
I don't have any additional comments, I'm not sure if any of the members of the board do. Not, uh, we can close the public hearing portion. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So move, oh, second.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nays. Hearing done, passes unanimously. They have to mark the abstention? Or is it? Yeah, Mr. Fernandez abstaining and Mr. Durant is, well, he's recused himself, so he's not really abstaining. He's officially removed. And Mr. Durant not here, so, with a vote of one, two, three, four, five. Five to zero. To close the public hearing. All right, um, discussion or recommendation on, or action on the article? To recap, the proposed changes to, um, article twenty-three, article twenty-two, excuse me, large-scale ground, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, uh, addition of language, providing definition to as of right citing, uh, noted as section one seven five dash two-two dot one, development proceed without the need for a special permit, amendment, waiver, or other discretionary approval, as of right development for large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system is subject to site plan review to determine conformance with the Norton zoning bylaw.
I don't know how you want to word it, but it would be, my recommendation would be, or, uh, however the town council prefers to word it, I mean. Uh, so that it doesn't have to come back to us, so.
I think, I think we're all kind of, to a point, agreed that Orin's comments are, are accretive to what we have in our opinion, and we'd respect town council's opinion on them.
Or defer to town council.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to propose, we'd like to suggest some additional language, but would defer to council in, in the final language of it.
Okay, so what, what, what specific language are we recommending?
Well.
That was in section one seven five dash two-two dot two?
Yeah, as a, as a site, as a bright standing, after the word, um, development may proceed as an allo- as an allowed use, without, just putting, adding in as an allowed use, and that would be both that section and section D.
So adding the language, um.
As an allowed use.
As.
As an allowed use.
As an allowed use.
Without the, yeah.
Without the need for special permit.
And the same would be applied in D?
Similarly.
Yes.
In D.
D.
They proceed, uh, as an allowed use. Without the need for a special permit, amendment, waiver, or other discretionary approval, okay? And then in the revised language for section E under section, uh, one seven five dash two-two dot two, there was a recommendation to replace the word chapter with?
Bylaw.
Bylaw.
Is it bylaws of the?
Bylaw.
Bylaws or bylaw?
Bylaw.
Is it bylaw?
Bylaw.
Bylaw.
Sigil.
And then, um, the section regarding the, uh, proposal law for location of solar facilities on land used for raising cranberries, this is section one seven five dash two-two dot three, location setback and screening requirements, the, which includes the additional language, notwithstanding the foregoing installations which qualify as an agricultural solar tariff generation unit, A S T G U, under the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target SMART Program pursuant to two-two-five C M R twenty dot zero-zero, regulatory provisions specific to A S T G U's, located on cranberry bogs that are active at the time of the submittal of the application, may be allowed within areas subject to the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act or any other town wetland bylaw. Nothing herein shall supersede or eliminate applicable requirements of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and any other town wetland bylaw with respect to such installations. Any recommended changes, all good with that? I think everyone's comfortable with that, so. So with a few recommended changes, um, would entertain a motion to recommend the submittal of the warrant, draft warrant article. Back to the board of selectmen.
So moved.
So moved by Orrin. Very good.
With the stipulation that.
It's our, some suggested changes, we defer to town council for the final form of the document, of, of relative to the changes, whether or not to accept these changes.
That I'll second.
All right, very good. So been moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nays? All right, it passes 5-0. All right, and I believe that concludes our business for this evening, unless any members of the board have anything further to add, or if Joe would like to. Ed and Buck in, that's fine also.
I will motion to adjourn in that case.
Griffin moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Orrin move, second and, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.